Action for the see select board order. We'll call vote Brian.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
And yes.
And Becky via.
And Becky.
Becky's here. Becky's here.
And this is Sarah Malish. I will call the finance, the joint finance committee meeting. Order at five o'clock P M. We'll call Lori.
Yes.
Amy.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes.
Sarah suggests. So.
Number one. Um, there's a school.
Yes.
And we have the right budget for presenting that to the town leaders, special family and two point eight. So you need. We presented at the uh, the last school committee meeting. Bottom line is it's a really significant reduction in the appropriation from Manchester. Trying to get a target number from the six. And um, so we dropped from what was. About the one to six percent increase to um. It's point yeah, I was gonna say it's under one percent. So represents a uh, reduction of almost five hundred thousand dollars.
Four ninety one six one oh.
Yeah.
Whenever it's said by the finance committees.
So I. Said, I think it makes sense to endorse the budget going forward. I I have concerns about the budget. Um, longer term in terms of. Because we buy on well, committee split district reserves. And so it's it's digging a hole deeper. So it's going to be harder to to get out of that hole in twenty five. And so I think it'll be extremely important that we proceed with some um, in-depth discussions with with Essex and how. On the vision is is position itself and moving forward. But I I do think that as a short-term measure, this allows us to proceed for next year. Uh, with some pay, but draconian payment from the schools perspective. And it allows us hopefully to have um, those discussions start sooner rather than later. With the school committee yourselves and your county fights. For most. So both Pam and I are here this evening to answer questions you may have concerning um, concerning the the new budget. And so as you, as you know, the process of what counts need to vote the budget. Special town meetings Essex is slated for the twenty sixth of June. Tomorrow morning, this is like, or here we'll make an official to go forward with the meeting on eight of June for Manchester. If either town where could fail the food. And the budget then the budget will go to each joint, founding of the two towns. And it's a majority vote of those in attendance. Two towns. Um, and and there's no um, contingency if that contingent on any subsequent votes, if you go to that third round. It's up or down. It's the position approved. Both towns have to accept it and figure out how to pay for it.
Mike.
So I have a question and then a comment slash suggestions. The question is, I see an eye round. I don't go to the pen, but roughly we're drawing three hundred grants. From reserves. So what? What will be the ballpark reserve as of June thirty this year?
So uh. Right, and when we talked about the last update that we played. We're working off the number of three point three. Going.
Could you speak up a little louder?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. Three point three eight million is the number that we're starting with and expecting about a hundred and sixty four thousand. So we're about. Three point one million. And then the question is going through the end of this year about three point one million. And the question is, what are we gonna do from there? So two eighty seven. We're taking it to just under, you know, three million two nine. And and we have all of these potential encumbrances against it that we've been talking about between the turf and the cap.
Okay, but high level two nine. Af- assets after pulling the three hundred.
Uh, Nick.
Okay, great. Um. My comment suggestion, you know, I'm a big fan of graphs. Maybe I'm alone there. I don't know. So I like all these graphs you guys put in the back here. Uh, my understanding from being at some of the school committee meetings and looking through some of the. Emails from South Pam is, you know, that part of the reduction, eight hundred grand is through retirement and attrition, right? So this is just my suggestion, but you know. And somehow, some way, maybe a couple of bar charts or any kind of charts that show total enrollment, but then married up with. You know, teaching staff, right? So you can kind of look and go, okay, all enrollment's going down. You know, teachers, what, you know what I mean? Just some kind of high level magic. That that's just my suggestion.
One of the thoughts I had is. If we approve this and it goes down just under five hundred thousand. There's been, you know, some question regarding the funding of fields. And that we've already agreed to pay the four hundred thousand cash for our half of the Brooks field. And I'm wondering if it makes sense to take four hundred thousand of this excess. Towards a cash payment towards the fields, which would reduce the amount. Of the bond and still keep the tax rate at what people are expecting. Makes sense.
I was gonna suggest the same thing.
I mean, I I'd almost go for the full, you know, like.
We can add more next year. It's my thought. It is in fiscal year twenty five, we could do another forty thousand in cash and then we'd pay for everything with cash.
Is that a high level? This makes sense.
Right, yeah.
And at the main town meeting, the town approved this amount, so we're kind of still keeping it in the schools.
Right, that's kind of what my thought.
These special town meetings, the turnout is like.
Who knows?
I don't uh, plus I I also. I also think it'd be tricky if Essex is sending cash for their piece and we're doing a bond, because then I would think. Somehow you guys have to keep that separate or something. Like, it just seems like if we can vote to cash, like, it just seems cleaner. And again, we got the cash, so.
Getting more and more difficult to explain the whole structure of the field financing as we go.
Right, so.
So that would need to be another one article.
It would be a second article.
Yeah.
You know, making a contingent out of proving.
A budget, yeah.
The school budget. Assuming Article One passes. And we're going to go through an additional. Four thousand, whatever number you want to use.
Well. Put Article One just shift from the operating to the reduced operating in the field.
It's gonna be separate, I think. It's completely separate votes.
Because effectively at the last meeting, we voted to sort that. So.
But but it was, it was. It was the amount of debt was contingent on the amount, it was reduced by the amount of cash.
It wasn't like a half to issue the bond.
Yeah, so it's not like we're obligated to that.
Right, we, for example, we we bonded for dredging and hard, but we're gonna use that authorization, because we've got a grant and a fund. So, so you're not obligated once it's been authorized. You have the option.
And we want to say.
Well, so just going back to the the basic budget. So we're we're kind of limited by what Essex is going to do, what the school committee has determined they want to risk putting back from Essex. So I would make a motion that we. School budget.
In the amount of sixteen million oh four four three three four.
Yes.
I'll say, I'll second.
We have a question.
Yes, Peter.
So what's the long-term plan? What are we gonna do? We're now back to reserves. Discouraging moment of.
Well, I think, I think that is a separate.
Discussion.
Huge discussion. I think it's very contingent. No, I don't think it's separate at all. I think it's very central to, in fact, adopting. This revised budget. I'd like to hear something about it. I I gather you don't want to discuss it now.
No, I think that. Thank you.
I would say um. It's absolutely relevant to what we're the the motion that's just. But um. I think the 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 moves that have to have to happen to resolve. The to land the government here. Um, are, I think, have to do with possibly. That's everything I've been told. That's a very messy process. And uh, and so it's not gonna happen. But I think that's, that's.
I just think in general, like, I'd love to talk about this subject. I didn't, I don't think this is the comfort of the cycle.
Thanks, absolutely.
Now, we need that success to give input is the problem.
I understand, but understanding what the implication is on the school system of adopting it. I have no problem with the actual motion. My problem is understanding what the schools think going forward. I gather that's something you want to discuss at another time, not tonight. Is that what I gather?
Well, I I think we could.
We are sure it's a good provider.
Yeah.
I I. If you will, I think.
I think the motion's fine. I have no issue with motion. Okay.
I wouldn't think there is a short answer. Maybe there.
Well, there's a short strategy. It's a short solution.
The answer, I don't think is really complicated. We find ourselves. Able to manage what we believe to be the agreement of of managing the budget to come in annually, yet no more than a three and a half percent assessment. Uh, we've done that successfully for two to twelve years with the exception of. Twenty twelve to fifteen, where we were experiencing pretty significant increase in enrollment and couldn't. It it needed to make some additions. Where we are right now is we're running. We have a two point eight percent increase in our budget this year, and one of our town partners can't afford to manage what that means for them in terms of their apportionment. It's a real structural problem. How can the district manage independently? It's either the bad choice of continuing to use reserves to manage the decline slowly. Or next year coming up for the complete restructuring plan that accounts for about one and a half million dollars in reductions. I know the sentiment on the cuts this year and that it felt very draconian. They were very, they were minor cuts. They were fractional cuts to multiple positions, really. Aside from the impact that our collaborative, uh, collective bargaining agreement has on how we need to reduce staff. But they were really, you know, point four of a position, point two of a position. But what it represents is a shrinking of accessibility to the program for students i- in our district, and that. Is unacceptable to a large part of our stipulation. Going forward, the cuts will seem even more drastic because the number is going to grow even larger. So I think we're just faced. We've been using a a graphic of a, uh, you know, a man in at a crossroads, and we are at a crossroads. We can either. Put our energy into fixing the structural problem or put our energy into managing decline and looking at a complete restructuring of how we deliver services. So the solution isn't a short discussion, but I think what the district can do independently to manage it, it's just one of those two things.
Becky has her hand up. Becky?
Hi, yes, thank you. Um. This may seem a pretty basic question, um, and I'm. I apologize if I didn't get that from all the information. But for the past several years, do we have um. An overview of the cuts that have been made to different uh, departments, whether it's um. Admin, sports, uh, STEM or the arts. Do we have that kind of information anywhere?
Yes, we updated the, we created a new document, which is a pullout from the documents that we were using to show the three comparison budgets that just highlights the compromise budget. Second to last slide in that document is accounting of the positions that have been lost through attrition.
I saw that, but that that pertains, th- th- does that go back several years or is, I'm just trying to see. Where if we cut more in some areas than another. And I know that doesn't necessarily help where we are at this moment in time, but I do think it is um. Along the lines of what Peter said, I think it's very critical for us to know the back information. As well as looking forward. And I'm just concerned.
I can send to the whole group. It is um, uh, F Y nineteen through and inclusive of the compromise budget of F Y twenty four. All of the positions by school and description.
Yes, it also.
Okay, I did, yes.
Sections.
Thank you, Pam.
Fluctuate every year at the high school.
Yeah. Um, is there any way to actually um, account for? Or determine what the impacts to the students are relative to the various losses?
Yes.
And how are those? How are you able to determine those metrics?
We're through to this year. Most of the reductions have been made at the elementary school. So from F Y nineteen through F Y twenty three, we reduced. Eight point nine positions, um, primarily at the elementary school, and they were, in fact. Um, I think sound reductions in response to the decreasing enrollment. And why I think they were. Considered quiet cuts or under the radar cuts were because we ju- we did use um. Retirements primarily or people moving on and not refilling those positions. So you you didn't have the. You didn't have the visual of someone losing their job. And we were making them in areas in which we felt we could manage our benchmark enrollment with the loss of those positions. So when you, so at the elementary school, we're always striving from K. To five, it varies a bit, but it's basically seventeen to twenty-two students in a class. So we felt by taking a section reduction at Memorial. As people retired, we could still maintain that benchmark level. With our latest, this year, we're taking out two different positions. We're we're just there. We're knocking on the door at some um, grade levels and may go over by one head in another. But we don't have, we're fine for this year, but next year, if we have an uptick in any one grade level, we may be having a discussion about adding a teacher. And in the current climate, there's no, there are no resources to add a teacher. So Becky, we've been doing it by really going year to year, assessing our enrollment, looking at where we can. Absorb um, a loss of a position, but not a loss of a a staff member. And just try to provide services where possible, um, something like the librarian. Someone retired, we merge the position so that they service both schools, because the the population. Um, in the number of classrooms in each building allow for that to happen. So I do have a whole chart that will show that.
Just one quick comment.
Thanks.
Just saying.
Wait a minute, I'm not sure Becky's finished. Sorry. Were you finished, Becky?
Um, I just said thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Um. I I take your point, everything you said. What was it, four or five left through attrition or retirement?
This year.
That's four, five, four, ten.
More than four. Four in the original budget, so we took four out at the beginning of December, and then I think we added in another four. Three or four.
Okay. Well, where I was going is to your point about the elementary school and like, if there's an uptick in the number of schools that register, students that register, and then there is this need for an additional elementary teacher to. You know, bring you back down to that seventy and twenty-two. You know, I would just suggest as part of a, call it, marketing campaign, you know, you just present like the multi-year picture, which would show. Okay, yes, I'm, now I need to hire the elementary, but don't forget that four or five retired, so you know, over these two years. You're still showing that, you know what I mean? So.
Question.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, a cou- couple of questions. I need a little context here. Uh, where do we stand on uh, money spent per two? Especially compared with other, other, other towns around us, et cetera. And how has that trend been going? We say three and a half percent every year. I don't know, three and a half percent is coming from a realistic base, or in fact, we're really scraping all the time, or what?
Sure. So three and a half was a number that was derived last time we went through it override. As kind of the gentle person's agreement of what our target assessment cap would be. So that's where that number comes from. It also tracks to the state average school, um, school district growth. Number per year, so it's pretty much in line with how, if you take an average of all of the state's annual um, budget growth. And that was actually. We got to that number not by our a- ask or suggestion, but in conversations with um, the board, the board heads from finance, board selectmen. In both towns, so.
I I'm actually looking, number of dollars.
Yep, number of dollars.
Twenty six, twenty, I, you know, I mean, just it looks like it's in that area.
Yeah, we're twenty-three.
We're twenty-three.
High on Cape Van, but lower than Rockport, which is the other, a very small school at seven hundred. We are comparable with high-performing districts, districts that typically land in the Boston top ten. There are outliers much higher than us and much lower. But we're pretty much in the middle of that pack, and we're trending above state average.
Okay, I know there are a couple that are up around thirty or thirty-one or something.
Yeah.
Okay, so the the number is, it's it's, it's not a, it's a very reasonable number, at least at this point. All right, second question. Essex really, they they approved the budget, but they did not vote the prop, prop two and a half. That means everything's on the table. I don't know what's going on over there, but obviously their operational budget is on the table as well as the school budget. I only hear about the school budget.
Oh.
I don't, I don't know what's going on there, not that it's directly relevant.
I guess I'd answer it by saying we can only control our budget.
I understand that.
Uh, I I think the override was specifically for the school.
Was it specifically for them? In other words, is it, they're not looking at the whole?
Yeah.
They they, they approved their town operating.
Okay.
So it's just, it was just the school budget.
All right, wasn't true. So the two and a half applied really only to that.
They chose to do it that way.
Okay.
They could have done it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Wait, you you're up.
Hold on, Mike. All right.
Yeah, I just had a question. So one of the things we tangled with in the past is um, choice. And um, and you know, that helps fill slots, but it's always, it can get risky. We've lived through that. Do you have any thoughts on that going forward? And I know this is kind of opening a little bit of a future discussion, but I think it does, that's embarrassing.
We are, as we've been rolling off staff through attrition. To address and right size for the enrollment decline. We've been shutting down opportunities for school choice. So I think the lesson we learned early in studying how school choice had be, had been done in in the couple of years prior, and this is like ancient history now. But we are never adding school choice just to keep teachers. We're always adding school choice where there's a level of stability at a grade level. And in under enrollment, so it's um, the analogy of the plane taking off with empty seats. At the elementary, we do, we have very little room for any additional school choice. Where we would have room and could explore further is whether or not we want to be a little bit more assert aggressive in bringing in school choice at the high school level. That could go to solving some of the issues of feeling like some of the classes are underscribed. And the way, the way students are distributed among the seven-period rotating schedule, it will never have as much of a direct impact as if you go one or two over at the elementary. We we would have to be significantly over at total grade level and total building capacity to trip the need for an additional teacher is where I'm going. So I think there's, there's more flexibility in bringing in school choice there. All that being said. I do know in the early days, we were upwards of about a hundred, upwards of a hundred and forty students in bringing in. Five hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars a year, which is significant revenue that that um, lowered assessment to both towns. So I think that's an avenue to pursue. I think it's also. It's a hotly debated topic where people have feelings on both sides. There's some financial gain. There's, you know, we feel a lot of comments around bringing people in to take services from other towns. The the state still caps um. The average reimbursement at five thousand dollars per student. There are some up charges if if students require additional special education services, but it's not the full. Twenty-three thousand dollar per pupil. So. I I think there's mixed feelings about it, but I think it's something that needs to be discussed in greater depth, because that is a way we can raise revenue. Um, in offset assessments. It's kind of a circular answer, but I think it, I think it should be on the table.
Take that, do that first, somebody.
So um. The school cho- choice is kind of enrollment that doesn't come from Essex for Manchester. So would it normalize that delta better if we were to put that money into the operating budget as opposed to reserves?
It does go into the operating.
It does go in, okay. Because to me, the thing that happened this year, we were gonna do a ten-year correction. And it happened to be on a year when uh, Manchester's enrollment dropped more than Essex's. So it really seemed unfair to Essex to have them bear that. Delta on a a big year as opposed to if it were normalized over the ten years. Um, so maybe that, that's somewhere structurally where we can look to um, offset that. But that, that was one statistic or graph that jumped out at me that. What, at the beginning of the year, we were gonna go with the five point four, whatever. We ended up less than the three point five, so it. A lot of drama occurred since then, but if we had started at the beginning and went with the five point four. And then later we found out that the Essex apportionment was gonna be so much greater that that did not seem fair. Um, and that that might be a good structural thing to look at somehow, go avoid doing that.
I can share that we've had a good sense of Essex apportionment um, balance for five years. And we have been tracking it and trying to actively engage in long-term problem solving around it. We just haven't found success yet. If you look back on the history of the district, Essex is back to where it was in your earlier years. I think what really happened is when we had the enrollment bubble that we speak about, the majority of those of the students in the bubble were new students. To Manche- residents in Manchester. So as they've graduated out, Essex hasn't grown. I think they're up only thirteen students over the past five or six years. What's really happening is the students are graduating out of Manchester, but Manchester isn't sending as many students in as replacement. So it's kind of leveling out to three um, twenty-ten levels of of split. All that being said, it's a real issue for them, because during, I would say, twenty-ten to twenty-fifteen. The apportionment formula was leaning very heavily for Manchester, and we're having a lot of conversations about how we would manage it. Those were the years that that three and a half assessment concept came up. And during those years, Manchester was carrying much larger b- burden. And obviously on a wonderful chart that just shows you on the flip side, Essex was coming in with these very low apportionment numbers. They were at. One, two point two, two point five, and it starts to to creep um, as we get into the fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen time period. And the year in nineteen is where it flips over. And now they're coming in um, higher on that bar graph than uh, Manchester is, and that's when we started to have some of these discussions. So. I, my guess is if we had more years of the district to look at, it's probably going to be cyclical over time, or this is just a one. You know, a blip in in time where you had a a big increase in students. Um, you'll probably, you know, with some of the housing projects that you're talking about, those numbers are gonna start to climb up again over time. So I, I just don't want people to feel like this is a one year, we're just surprising you in May with it, with this. If folks who have been at the table, board heads, know that this has been an ongoing conversation. For several years that has landed us back in this same compromise situation, which is, there's really no appetite for the override. The goal this year in trying to lower the budget in March was to get a number to go out to vote that had any chance of passing. Um, and when two ninety. For two hundred and ninety thousand dollars was translating into six hundred dollars for household, there was real concern that it was from the past. So if we would have stayed at the original five point four, they would have been with seven, eight hundred dollars. So, so a lot of it was done to try to make it um, make it passable in Essex.
Coming back to John's point about, you know, dollars per student, so. I did a little data analysis. I might have been using fiscal twenty-two. So obviously, there's three inputs to the portion, right? You know, total population, both towns, total number of students from each town, and then housing values. But just for kind of analysis, I just said, what if it was just simply students from each town, right? So you take total dollars from this town divided by students, total dollars from that town divided by students, right? And it shows me two things. Number one, Essex paying three thousand less per student than Manchester. Because of the housing component that comes in, which is interesting. And then the second interesting point. Is that it came out at about nineteen thousand for Essex. And Essex Tech is almost eighteen, right? And so I'm just thinking to myself, right, as we know. And so I'm just thinking to myself, right, as we know, for every student from your town that goes to Essex Tech. You know, FinCom has to vote on it and Town has to vote, you know, and they passed that part, like. You know, so I'm just kinda scratching my head a little bit, like, you know, you're fine with the eighteen for Essex Tech, like you didn't view that as unreasonable, but. Nineteen for M E R S D, like, it's not, like, it doesn't make sense.
Well, we can't solve that.
Yeah, no, I don't know. I just said, maybe someone should point that out. You know, you you're fine with eighteen grand for Essex Tech, but all of a sudden nineteen grand from E R S D, which by the way, is three brain lower per student in Manchester is.
I heard it was five thousand difference.
I I calculate it three thousand.
We don't calculate for pupil. Uh but you can speak to how for pupil is determined.
Oh, it's a Department of Ed statistic, and it's based on everything, not just the budget that goes to you guys, but also. Uh you know, point two, if you want to, probably from this line through there, so it'll be interesting to see how that impacts things. We did notice a little bit more of an uptick in point two versus twenty one, which I think the COVID factor is a factor in there. Um so, but the Department of Ed does it for every district the same way, and we have to report literally every penny to them out of every. Grant and and the budget, et cetera, just to make sure, and so. In August, law students, there's an apple staff, but the only thing that they don't approve within their capital uh for building project. Because those are way too lumpy between schools.
Any more discussion on the motion on the floor from the finance committee?
The organization needs a long term solution, because this is a little, this is big.
I just, it's, it's good discussion.
No, no, I I I just appreciate, thank you for letting it happen.
So are we, any more discussion? Are we ready to move? Or?
Yes.
Dean?
Mike?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
And Sarah, what's this?
Second.
Well, call vote, Brian?
Yes.
Anne, yes, John?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you get me? Yes.
So now should we go back and talk about the four hundred thousand?
Yes.
Is there a sentiment? Is there a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to take four hundred thousand of the roughly five hundred thousand savings due to the reduced school budget. To apply towards a cash payment to the district to pay for the fields.
Yeah.
My word of it.
Mm hmm. Second.
More seconds. Any discussion? Oh, Lori?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Sarah, what's this?
Is there a motion to put an article on the warrant?
So moved.
Sorry, this. They can see so moved. Okay.
I'm in and out, sorry.
Is there a second?
Second. What he said.
That I asked for was an article, to put an article on the warrant to contribute four hundred thousand dollars toward the fields as a cash payment. Um to reduce the debt level um on the. And I think Becky's already approved it, and uh you seconded it. Is there any discussion? Becky?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Um.
Yes.
Anne says yes.
So just to clarify, make sure I'm understanding what. Completely separate of the Manchester share on the. We have four hundred thousand based on the notion that the assessment was reduced from which point to the reconsidered budget. We're hoping to use that to reduce any amount of charge that town Manchester would receive. For the district one point two share that would get.
The debt exclusion, yes.
Okay, Becky, clear.
We were kinda copying Essex, right?
Well, Essex hadn't done anything yet.
No, but that's, but that's what they've said. They want to, right, they intend to pay cash for their piece.
Another way to phrase it is, we're, we're trying to avoid accumulating debt, and the only way is to pay as you go.
Yeah.
Efficient way to do cap.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
That's kind of a misstatement, because the total cost to us is one point two. It, no, cost to us is eight hundred. One point, to the, to the district is one point. No, one point six to the district, one point two to us, right?
Yes.
No.
No, one point six, if you include Rock.
Okay, it's one point six total. We've already contributed four hundred thousand for our share of Brooks Street, that makes it one point two. The one point two is divided between Manchester and Essex, eight hundred to Manchester, four hundred to Essex.
Mm hmm.
Manchester has just kicked in four hundred.
Right.
There is still.
Four hundred.
There's, they backfill out the district to borrow eight hundred thousand instead of one point two.
Right.
Well, yes. In theory, and in fiscal year twenty five, we could vote to add another four hundred thousand cash if we wanted.
Exactly.
But it'd still be borrowing one point two, and. They, I thought they didn't borrow until the project was over, correct?
The project will be.
Uh fine, yeah. Will be in fiscal twenty five before the project's over, right?
No.
Oh, okay.
It'll be done. Okay. I can bring you what we know. Okay, right now Highland Field is scheduled to um start as soon as uh La Crosse and Long has the. Brook Street is still up in the air until we have some clarity on the operating budget or the school committee decides to go in a different direction. Um they heard from special counsel uh last, on Tuesday night, it was a great night. Um there are just differing opinions on the way. If you recall at how at Manchester County, there was a question, what happens if Essex doesn't vote for it? And it was our understanding and our statute, if they decided not to take up the issue at town meeting. Time, passage of time would act as an affirmative yes and allow us to go forward. And borrow, as long as we had Manchester's yes from the vote, because you put it forward at town meeting. They didn't put it forward at town meeting, they didn't want to take it up at town meeting, so it's just sitting there dormant. What they did do was get a legal opinion that says our interpretation of the statute is not accurate.
Regional.
Regional agreement. Uh due to type of regional agreement asks that. We prefer, we engage in the practice of having actual affirmative votes at both town meetings. Essentially, in a nutshell, not to get into all the details, there are two dueling special counsel opinions on whether or not we have the authority to go forward and borrow. Um I think what common sense and what the attorneys are saying is. Because it's hotly contested and there is no agreement, it doesn't fit in a very good position for borrowing, even if we have the authority to do so. So at this point, we are pretty blocked from going forward with that and need to wait to determine. How Essex, Essex is going to determine in the fall how it wants to handle its portion of the, of the debt. All that being said, I think the school committee intends to take up some discussion on whether we should try a different path forward. I just can't say. We were at three four the other night. I don't know where that will end up, but I think we're gonna continue that discussion and likely have a meeting before one of the two town meetings. Lots we could do.
Okay, so what does that do? If we just contributed by debt that you may not incur.
Sure. I, I can't speak with certainty, but it's, it's, looks to me like we are on a path to try to get to compromise and mutual support. So I think our hope would be ongoing conversation with Essex not to. To come to some type of written agreement over the, allowing us to go forward with the borrowing that would allow everything that's happened on the Manchester side to continue. I just can't.
I, I, I can't tell you. I am, I am concerned that you may decide that the only way to go forward is to take the full cost of the fields out of the. Out of the risk you got from your reserves. In that case, we've just contributed for another four hundred thousand dollars that will not be matched by Essex in any way.
You wouldn't contribute.
Yeah, so we, we would not collect that money. We wouldn't collect that money until we rolled it through. Some charge, and so. Do you have a time limit on that money?
Was that?
Is there a time bound on that money?
Actually, no.
On the four hundred thousand?
No, as a capital, you can carry it year to year.
But I, I, I think that Manchester might be hard pressed. If we voted four hundred thousand for our portion of the Brook Street field, if you don't go ahead with that. I, I, I think that that would be a very problematic to Manchester.
I understand, I have understood that from the outset.
Yes.
Yeah.
We just suffered from the other four.
Right, which is suffer from the other four hundred thousand on that, yeah. Um but it's, I would think that if the decision is made before town meeting not to go ahead with Brook Street field and that four hundred, the additional four hundred thousand might fall out of waste. Might not pass.
I don't see that happening.
Why?
I don't see them back going forward to fields.
Instead, are we doing Highland?
It may be a delayed start to Brook Street, but I don't.
Okay.
I, I, I can't speak for the committee because we haven't really gotten into the second level of discussion yet, but I don't see it not happening. I think a more real, a more real question is, when does it happen?
But Highland's starting almost, almost, almost immediately, like you said, it's just girls across and then Highland starts.
Highland is starting. Yeah. Yeah. Yes, it has to. When was the next school committee meeting when you could discuss this? It's either the twenty sixth or the twenty eighth.
Oh.
Before the two town meetings, typically the school committee will convene.
Is, is it your intention? To make a decision on whether to go ahead with Brook Street at one of those meetings?
It will be on as an agenda. Thank you. Am I hearing that? This is more information for me. Um it would be a very positive step forward if we could get them to move forward.
It would be a very negative step backward if they did not approve Brooks. And we certainly have packaged it to the town of Manchester as both fields. And clearly, since Manchester is paying for half of the cost, the Brook Street field. It would feel like the rug was pulling, being pulled out from under us if you don't go forward with, with the field for which we're paying fifty.
So from my, from my invoices thing, we would obviously not invoice for any project that we're not moving forward from. Completely understand that there's something issue, which is how we feel of that, and when we're. Manchester has stepped up on multiple occasions to pay those bills, which we, or prove those bills, which we certainly appreciate. And the discussion will be around what we do in the situation where you have one town committing funds and another doesn't. Whether we can. We can't certainly pay for Essex um.
Without.
Yeah, and we can't pay for Essex, right? And so then it gets to a situation where we can reserve funds. So the second four hundred thousand is really an option, as I'm understanding, that would be available to us. If we can move the whole thing through the two town process. If we don't do that, and the school committee pays straight out of reserves, I don't see how we would collect that extra four hundred thousand dollars. Just to make sure people understand, it really has gotten quite twisted as we move forward, we've been trying to accommodate both towns' desires, but. Appreciate the support. Right, complicated road, and we still have to hear from the second town partner. Otherwise, the school committee won't be able to.
And I guess I would love some feedback on that scenario, which is. If we get to resolution on the twenty sixth or the twenty eighth and just say we're moving both four projects forward. The risk to the school district is that ultimately the entire project will come out of reserves because we can't get. The commitment from one town, because if we don't get the commitment from one town, then we're not. Paying.
The new four hundreds.
All right, how is that? How is that similar?
Concern is best. Manchester, the books we failed to pay for Hatterton, and um. It is an older field than Highland and presumably in worse shape. And I think the Manchester voters would find it very offensive. If the school district decided that it had to come for its own reserves and therefore would be right off. Is there other matters?
This is our, I don't know, for the other half.
It's place second apportion, I mean, five, five, what is it, two thirds, one third, or, yeah, so we pay about two thirds.
That's for Highland, right?
No.
For both.
We're two thirds for both.
Two thirds for the, yeah. Two thirds for four.
So it's fifty percent plus two thirds.
Two thirds of fifty percent.
I.
So basically, the way to think of it is just Manchester.
Need it dark.
Six, that I got Manchester, I believe is five sixths of the Brook Street field, and Essex is one sixth. That's correct. We're five sixths of Brook.
Yeah, total.
So we're three sixths is half, and then being two thirds, two sixths is five sixths. Sorry.
So the P one, we got.
And in town, definitely count one sixths.
That's right.
Four thirds of Essex.
That'll, half the field belongs to the town, right, and half the field belongs to the district. So for the half that belongs to the town, obviously, we have a hundred percent. And then for the other half of the fields. Paying two thirds. So. Cash, like, we've already contributed, just in fractions, we've already contributed what fraction of Brook?
Half.
Half.
Something to just throw out there, not, no decision needed tonight, does it make sense down the road to switch primary ownership of Brook? So you're willing the district for anything in the future? That way, it doesn't tie hands when we get into. Is.
This party by lease agreement with the town of Manchester, so it would be, I think, simpler to effectuate than having to go through a regional agreement. It's a, it's a counted district rather than two towns in district type of agreement, it would be very simple.
Because from the Essex perspective, they might.
So basically, one invoice instead of two. It, it had a lot of rationale for why it was done in the first place.
Absolutely.
Project, this school project, but that's best.
It would never have, you wouldn't get, you're held, you're feeling held up right now because we are in a bit of a situation. You could just go forward and you could send us the bill and we could work through how to deal with that bill. I mean, a very small version of this was the bridge project. A long time just to get through, understanding who have what responsibility and digesting.
And it's from the same. Our graph of the same lease agreement with just Manchester only.
So right now, so right now for Brook, we're, to think about it this way, we're sending an invoice out of Essex, or you're sending.
No, we're not now.
Not.
No, you're. That was again, when we're running a project and invoicing, but the proposal is whether down the road you would switch it so that. Since it's a fifty fifty right now share anyway, why wouldn't you just take it so you're not, you're just invoicing the district? And we have to gather.
For the Essex portion. The.
For the district portion.
Of your district, you're, sorry. The complication with that is that you have the infrastructure to deal with.
That's why we're. Um, the facilities component.
The facilities component, and, and I suppose. Our person, right? Do you do?
Do the maintenance on certain fields in Essex, and it's just a billing, we can certainly. We don't have to solve it tonight, but they're sure there's a way to work out that the maintenance piece of the two. We don't need to, we can still hold on to that. More of this large capital. Issue seems to be, again, it came up with the bridge. It's, it's something that's difficult to explain and hard for people to digest, but they own a piece of responsibility for something that they don't see.
So we finished the schools?
You know where to find us if you need more. Happy.
You're welcome today, but don't feel obligated.
We, we appreciate the support and the questions, and I'm trying to make sense of the situation.
Yeah.
Article one will be the, the school, article two, and then the articles. What is currently, uh, article two becomes article three. So that is the, this, um, assuming that the planning board finishes up their work this evening. Then article, now article three would be to see if. The current section twelve, the bylaws, deleted in its entirety, and the new section twelve is in its place. Um, section twelve is administrative procedures. And so again, if final board approves that going forward this evening, then that would be this third. So then now article four would be if article three fails, then the voters decline to approve. A new section twelve. It would include, uh, why we give out site plan easily. Then article now number four says, will the town vote to reinsert the old site plan into section, section six point five? So again, just quickly, at the full town meeting. Section six point five was deleted in anticipation of it being picked up in a new section twelve. When that article was canceled, we never got the nothing. That would have included. So that's what article four means to. Um, and then now number five, number five is the third potential zoning article. A mends, um, the sections four, five, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Um, with those corrections, cross references primarily. Where is emissions in those sections?
Citing citing the old section of I R O rather than the new.
And then further, it gives. Of update the table of contents and the index, making sure that all those cross references are correct. So again, assuming that planning board approves these three tonight, shortly. In this meeting, um, well, most three articles will be going to. So I would say it's it's fair to say that these are administrative. The fact changing zoning, it's not. Zones are different uses and all of that. It's really a focus on administrative procedures, um, cleaning up, um, errors and cross reference.
More importantly, they're not directly financially. So no offense, but.
Unless you want to consider extending the duration of the special permit from two years to three years.
If I can find a way to consider something.
I gather the finance committee has some concession on this.
Right, it's my understanding that we'll be voting on the actual warrant on the twentieth.
Well, we need to, we need to post, we need to.
Oh, sorry, okay.
We do need your official.
Oh, okay.
Stances.
Right, so.
Unless you'd like to get it down.
So on the zoning articles, article four, five, and six. Maury seconds it, take a vote, Maury.
It's not six.
Four, five, and six. Three, four, and five. We take no position. Now it's been changed to six and seven. They've all been moved forward on. Okay. So. I'm voting to take no position on articles three, four, and five. We'll take a vote. Maury.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes. Yes.
And Sarah was yes. Um, do we need to go back to article one and article two, or we already voted that? Okay. Okay.
Okay, I would like. Approve, approve, approve articles three, four, and five.
Second.
Becky.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Dan says yes.
Okay.
I was sure that when you said move to put it out. Okay, so then, um. And for the two money articles. We did no financial articles, so article now number six, uh, the possibility of authorizing. Not to create one point five million for the purchase of a replacement ladder. Furthermore, um, to to pay for that one, uh, using. One point three two from the existing apparatus fund, replacement fund. Plus another one point, I'm sorry, a hundred eighty thousand for the sale of the mini pumper. And finally, furthermore, to rescind the vote to purchase a new ambulance that was made a few town meetings ago.
So I I'm fine in principle and money wise, but like, I'm just a little confused because. Aren't we like right in the midst of transferring chiefs?
Yeah, so this would give him the ability to report, assuming he feels that's appropriate. You know, you know, having to wait until the fall town meeting.
It just seems a little like art for the horse. Come in first, and then if the chief says, hey, we need a fire truck, like, okay, like.
In in conversation that we had with them, he feels too strongly that.
Chief identifying.
If he feels that it isn't appropriate, we don't have to spend the money.
Yeah, it's just interesting to me that he hasn't spent one day yet officially on the job, like, that's all.
Take the basic kind of stance, he's in support of it.
Yeah, again, I'm not, I'm not against it, I'm not against it, I'm just, she seems to be from a timing point, dude, that's not seeming.
When does he start?
Did he make a comment about the cell?
Still on the road. He went by my house the other.
It's the one eighty, is that some.
Let's say, um, uh, so we we have a, um. A deal with the town of, um. Dunston, purchasing. So that's a hard number.
The select board had already said that.
What?
For that number. Or will be soon.
It's still in town.
Just just your point that this gives him, let's say, the right to do it, but not the obligation. But that, this seems pretty. Black and white, like, voting to authorize the purchase of a replacement truck, like.
It's it's the same thing we did for the ambulance last November, and then a decision was made not to do it.
All right, so that's not, that's just allowing, it's not, oh, okay.
Not band-aided.
Okay.
In my collect, the se- select board still needs to approve it before it's actually done.
Yes.
Yeah.
I would just say on this large capital purchase, and I fully respect the conversations you've had, Greg, but. Had a couple of fire chiefs with different philosophies about equipment and capital, we always wrestle with five year capital. I think it would be really healthy to meet with a new chief as soon as possible, get his philosophy about where this is going. Cue it up before this one is.
Right.
So are you saying you don't want it on this one?
I'm just uncomfortable voting this much money guided by a person in town. Position that we haven't met yet.
Excuse me, um, I've had my hand up for a while.
Did your hand hurt?
That's me, out in the woods of Maine, but, um, I I respectfully disagree, Maury. I think that there have been quite a few conversations. Um, and Kathy Balata, who's unfortunately not able to make the meeting, and Brian, have had. Extensive conversations. Brian, can you speak to some of these concerns?
Yes, uh, to to that point, uh, both candidates that we interviewed were, uh. Because I had reservations about getting a ladder truck. Okay, I've returned a hundred eighty acres. You, of both the candidates selected, the other candidate were, uh, made a compelling argument for a ladder. And and to that point, chief, the current chief, new chief, has has not hung up on a new one. He's willing to, uh, look at the most cost effective way of securing that. So I think the number of one point five, hopefully, we don't even get close, you know, with him, you know, he's talking about, he looks, looking for a demo. Or a used vehicle. So he is con- conscious, but do, uh, they are both, they all make compelling arguments, it's not a rich and clear. He's, uh, you know, and, uh, like you say, I didn't understand it, and now I do.
I mean, I don't, to me, that's all well and good, and I don't dispute anything, you know, but it's just, timing, it just seems.
It seems odd.
Appropriate for special, it's not me to contribute for the main town.
Well, Jake McNeely is on this, he's on the Zoom, maybe we can ask him.
Jake McNeely, would you like to speak?
Sure, good evening. Um, yeah, so I think it is, I know it's a big cost item, I do think it's imperative, uh, to move forward with it. Um, reason being is, you know, hopefully the verbiage is up to one point five, um, and we can get it for a lot cheaper. But I do think that if we wait, the cost of these trucks quarterly go up. Being up to five to seven percent quarterly, uh, so with a big ticket item, we're gonna see a bigger price jump. Uh, if we don't act sooner than later, and I do think it's imperative that the town have that available, uh, the ladder truck. Uh, given, uh, this way the town's makeup is and the staffing.
Can you speak to why you feel a ladder truck is necessary for this time, rather than just another pumper?
Yeah, absolutely, so when you look at, uh, manpower, um, we're going out the door between, with anywhere between two and four personnel. If we have somebody, and I use this, um, when I spoke with the, uh, select board. He takes a block like seven central, if that ever caught on fire, our ability to maintain it to that one building. Would be limited if we didn't have the ladder truck, that a fire of significant ma- magnitude without a waterway, uh, would extend. And we wouldn't be able to stop it, um, that's one, and then the ladder truck's not just used for fire suppression. It's also used for rescue, it's been utilized for, uh, rope rescue to give us a high angle point. So there's a multitude of reasons why a ladder truck is important to have in town, fire suppression is just one of those reasons.
Are there, are there a lot of other towns that look like us that have have ladder trucks?
Yes, actually, there's very few that do not have ladder trucks, and not having a ladder truck also affects, uh, the insurance rates as well.
So Essex has a ladder truck?
Yes.
Are we in sync with the current zoning as far as building heights and lateral length? I know the zoning has been changing, I had to get a ladder and then find out that we're gonna approve.
Yeah, so the, I mean, the average aerial truck is about a hundred feet on average is what most people go with, and it's not so much the vertical glory. Based upon, uh, like, um. So let's say you had to park away because of the curb setback, um, the ladder truck would still be able to reach the roof. Especially if we're looking at different, uh, projects in town that might be, uh, moving forward in the near future, uh, I think it's better to. Be prepared than do a knee jerk reaction.
I have a more basic question.
Yeah.
May I ask it, which is, what's wrong with our current one? I I'm I'm sorry, I'm behind everything.
Pass emissions.
Oh, this is the one, thank you, okay, I've lost track of which vehicle. Thank you. We're never able to solve that.
Thank you, I I just might say from a, from a financial perspective, we gotta have two pumpers, all ladders are pumpers. And if you don't get a ladder, you gotta get a pumper, that's nine hundred, day to a million, so the decision here is not a one point two, one point three, one point five. It's more like, it's many hundreds of thousands, but it's not a million bucks, we gotta, we gotta do something.
I'm learning things about fire.
Any more? Questions?
We've been. It will take some time to get a ladder truck, even if we find one used and we can get it immediately. And I think this, not only will the cost be higher, it will wait six months or a year, but I think. Getting one sooner is 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 a consideration, and you have heard from the new chief. You've heard from Brian, talked to him, and Greg talked to the new chief. I think. I think he will do a reasonable job, and I don't think, he's certainly not new to the, to the job of of being a. An executive member of a fire department, I think he'll be able to handle this one.
I just, one last comment to build on, or his earlier comment, it's just like, I mean, in general, I'm fine, like, if we need it, we need it, but. Morrie's point, you know, I don't know, over the past five, six, seven years, it's just been, it's been a lot of. I need this, and then the next person says, no, I need that, I need this, and I, so I just hope that, you know, we go forward with this. About some situation with six, nine, twelve months, where it's like, oh, well, we should, you know. What's that?
There's a quest, uh, is universal.
Now, Brian, over the years on the finance committee, every single chief we've had has won, felt. Different apparatus is the number one.
Yes, but the.
Every, the single one.
Until now, we had a working ladder truck. And now we don't have a ladder, and everybody, I mean, the three chiefs. And chief candidates agree.
We we're just sensitive to the fact, I mean, we wanted, they wanted the, what was it, the troop, what's it called, the?
The squad car.
The squad car. Well, no, first was a squad car, that was gonna solve all our problems because it could get into little places.
Excuse me, Anne, and and Sarah, I'm sorry. Um, I don't think we should be rehashing what has gone before. Because at this point, we need to discuss what it is we're going forward with, and we've heard from the new chief. We have had previous chiefs who've also said the same thing regarding the ladder truck. I'm not talking about other equipment, just the ladder truck. Thank you.
Those who don't learn from history.
So, do I have a motion from the finance committee to recommend article six? Dean makes a motion, do I have a second? Tom was second. Any discussion? More discussion? Are we ready to vote? Okay, Maury. Dean.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Peter.
No.
Andy.
Yes.
And Sarah votes yes. So a vote of six to one.
A motion from the select board to put. With dot add article six to the warrant.
Second.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so then lastly, um, new article's number seven, forty six.
So, uh, as I explained in our memo to you, um, the budget that was approved to soon put a half percent increases on wages, um, we understood that contracts were not finalized and that that number might increase due to inflation as this continues to, to be. Um, and so we, we don't have all the contracts finalized, but we're getting very close in the three to three and a half percent range for next year. And so, um, so we're three elements, you know, potentially, uh, exceeding some additional values.
Could you just tell us if any contracts have been approved and if so, which ones?
For the DPW and the clerical, we, we have finalized the full contract, but there's memorandum of understanding on both of those.
And those contracts have what kind of percent?
Um, a, a total of nine that happened.
Three.
So three, three, three.
That was DPW.
Okay.
Unblinded.
Not a big one, no.
That's, that's correct.
We typically, um, extend to the department heads the same as, um, as the average of the, of the.
How, how many FTEs and clerics?
Twelve.
It's all the town. Thank you.
But so.
So if you, if you, if you would reply that across the board, um, it would probably get to about, you know, increase from what this budget is.
The financial parts have been resolved. We approved this. It's not still paying this department. The bargain is now closed on compensation. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, and actually for those two years that, that's close on everything, we just, we're just, we have to now take it.
Still open for what?
So fire is still open? Please handle it as a review going.
Those, those two, the DPW and the article, when, when do those kick in? When they start?
July.
Wow.
When is the fire department negotiating? It's a guess.
Um, I would, I would, I would only expect it within the, uh, within a month, uh, four weeks' time. They have been in June, but it'll, it should be by the end of June.
But you have, have, have you, have you come to a agreement on the financial one?
We're very.
So maybe we don't have, you know, we don't have an agreement that we have kind of delivered to the, to the financials.
And what's the significance of us deferring this to a later town meeting?
November.
Right, so that's an option. You can defer to November, so it would be.
Finalized.
It would be retroactive.
I understand that, but I just don't, to me, I'm not in favor of this being done now when in fact it can be done later and it will be retroactive. I'm not sure I understand why we're, why we're, we're proposing this for this meeting. Is there some reason?
So it, it is certainly easy, but it's straight at me to go forward with the, the two on one. Rather than do it retroactive, retroactive, it's just, it's a bit of a, it's a straight ahead.
Answer is no, there's no.
It's paying, starting to pay July one rather than a lump sum after town meeting, who's there? Is that the difference?
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, let, let me try to come out of a different line. So when you were doing the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four, you obviously knew that these contracts were going to get finalized by July one, right? So you had to make, I assume, an estimate, how you thought those contracts were gonna play out?
No.
No.
So we made the decision to hold it at two and a half.
So from a, from a strategic point of view, I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna have a number already baked in. I wanted to say we budgeted two and a half and that's all I've got. So from a negotiating perspective, that was, that was more helpful.
Okay, I mean, saying the same thing a little bit, but fair enough. Uh, right, and so it just came in higher than the two.
Yeah, I, I wasn't surprised that it came in.
Yeah.
I mean, I hope I forecasted that too.
You did, you did. I just, my proposal is just to wait till it's done and then we'll go.
My, I agree. I would rather have actual numbers rather than just long. The details.
I mean, was this salary reserve account different from the regular reserve account?
Yeah, true. It'd be only used for.
For that time, we're better off using the reserved account if we need it for the next.
Well, we can't, we can't spend this money unless and until town meeting approves it. So the question is, does it go on this town meeting now? Or would it make more sense to wait until November when presumably there are actual numbers? But it means employees don't start receiving the raise on July first. They'll get a retroactive lump sum whenever it's approved by the town back to July one.
And we're just, we're talking about fifty grand.
Yes, it says ninety.
Well, so when it says ninety, this is a question, is the remaining forty due to OT?
So two pieces, right? So there's three elements. Three, three elements. One, one is the biggest piece of fifty thousand was for, um, wages coming in higher. The second piece is, would allow potentially some adjustments to some positions. So I mentioned in my memo, so we have a number of positions that are consistent to, um, for, with a pressure, um, account. So there's been some discussion about the need for, for better succession plan and having another two person sort of in the ready, in the wings, on deck, if you will, um, to, to move into the full time position. So you could adjust three or four positions to be assistant pressure or an assistant accountant, rather than assistant two. Um, that commands a little bit more money. Um, that person would, would there would be able to, to replace the, the department head. So, um, another twenty five thousand would allow those potential adjustments. And those are in discussion. We haven't finalized those, but you can give us that option when I'm forward. So that's the second element, what you see of the, of the ninety thousand. And then the last element was for, um, additional fire department overtime because of the, again, the timing of being fully trained. So we're, we have a two week lag in July.
Has that changed since we in fact moved the fire budget at the earlier town meeting? And has that lag now changed?
Well, we didn't know what the law was going to do. So, you know, we were guessing, we were hoping that we would have, have them fully trained. They weren't able to get into the academy until, until this last spring session. And so they, they graduate from the academy July fourteen.
So they're able to get into the academy.
Two week window. Um, you don't have to put in additional money. You can, we, we have enough money in the current overtime, but come the end of the year, maybe I'm short. So you can always use your reserves at that time. Um, it, it's, it's an option I'm putting a little bit on.
I was gonna say, what are the implications on the three if we vote no? So on the first one, on the contracts, it goes all the way to the fall town meeting and at least the contract's there, then like you said, it's a retro.
But the trajectory now to say, um, staff prefer to get the.
So what's the impact on the other two pieces? If you vote like.
Well.
So the second piece, again, the adjustment, that can wait. There's no time. That isn't very time sensitive.
I, I think that if we wanted to adjust positions, we should have discussed it with the main budget and therefore this should be deferred to the twenty twenty five budget discussion is my opinion. I don't think we should be coming back and making changes on our original theories and budget. Um, you know, this isn't, this isn't, this could be predicted, but this isn't something unpredictable.
I've got, I've got a question about the first element. So for the DPW and for the clerical group, you've got an agreement in some memorandum of understanding, et cetera. Is their understanding that they would think that all of this is gonna hit on July one in terms of they're getting paid? I'm just wondering, if we don't vote on this now and we say we'll pay retroactively, there's some people that, uh, they would like that money now. And are they gonna come back and say, we wanna put a little pressure on you if this is gonna be retroactive?
Um, I mean, so, I mean, I've always been clear that it's subject to appropriation.
Yeah.
But do people hear that? No.
No, they're expecting July one.
They are, they are expecting a July one.
All right.
You know, we, we have been clear that, you know, that's, it has to be subject to appropriation. I thought, nonetheless, you are right.
Okay.
I think it's a good point. I, 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 you know, where you have the contracts hammered out for, you know, the article, why don't we include that?
Just that piece.
But, but it's not, it's not relevant yet for the part.
Right.
As, you know, even though you're close and you're, the number may not change, you know, we are in effect tipping our hands.
Yeah.
Sarah, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
What does the select, I think of these, uh, assistant two versus the system? Does the select board have a, a view on, on these changes in those positions?
You haven't voted yet. You had some preliminary discussion.
I feel it's premature.
I just think it's something that should be discussed and not just.
To that point, I like your proposal, but you could discuss them all along.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, right, but, but I, I guess, you know, my position still is, if we're gonna discuss adding positions, changing positions, that should be part of the annual budget discussion. And that subsequent appropriations should be for unanticipated items. Um, the contract is one that we knew what was in the works, but we chose not to include it. Um, but changing positions is a bigger, requires a bigger picture, in my opinion, that they should be part of the budget discussion.
I think we had discussed it specific to the fire department. This, this would hit the two. Fire chiefs, fire.
I mean, Brian mentioned it, but it was taken off the table.
Oh.
Uh, I have a question, Greg. Where is your sense of urgency on these two positions?
I don't know.
On, on, on the positions where you're looking at the assistants. Uh, because we've had preliminary discussions, uh, because, you know, some of these departments are pretty small and if the top person disappears, you got nothing. And if people can take responsibility and move up, but is, is there a sense of urgency on your part or it's?
I, I, I would have a stronger sense of urgency come the fall. I, I'm okay waiting right now. And they, and they put pardon for the fall town meeting if, if things continue.
But you know your people.
Right, so I'm, 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 I'm nervous about some changes that are, or potentially in the mix. And, and we'll pay waiting, you know, four or five months, but I don't know if I wanna wait a little bit either.
All right, this is it.
May I make it? Thank you. Um, Greg, I, I've heard some noises, um, about some different departments and, and, um, possibly looking elsewhere. And, um, that concerns me, but also in terms of succession planning, I don't know how much of this, uh, is perhaps a little more uh, poignant now, more so perhaps than it was when we discussed budget last time. What do you think?
Yeah, it, it has become more poignant and, 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 um, more critical that we take a hard look at this whole issue. Um, you know, we, we, Dan and I had a discussion today about potential hiring and, 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 and it's just, the market is really, really difficult. And so that.
So then, so it's pretty critical to, to maintain retention. I mean, we don't wanna be going into a virtually empty pool, I would think. Is that? No.
But, I mean, that, that, that problem always exists. It's, it's, it's more acute these days. It's because the market is so difficult. So.
You know, I think when you're talking succession plan, you don't just automatically take the people you have. You have to look and see, you know.
There's that automatic.
Right, what, what's needed and it, it just seems to me that that's a more, it, it's more than something you put on a warrant at the last.
Hence the word planning, right?
That, that's what you just said, putting it on the warrant at the last minute, like, I mean, someone can jump on me if they think they're wrong. But the only reason we're really having a special time meeting is mostly because of school, right? So if that wasn't happening, I don't think we'd be talking about most of this other stuff, right?
We'd be waiting until the fall.
Right, so, so it feels like we're trying to like, you know, throw stuff off, like.
Define yourself as being Mike and, and Sarah. The idea of changing from an assistant to, to an assistant probably needs more discussion in both these boards.
Well, I told you here that, the question was, do you?
Do you wanna fund it before we discuss it so you can act on it as soon as we finish discussing?
Right, that's the question.
And that's what we don't like. We don't like putting aside pools of money for this. Yeah.
Greg, what would be the amount for the other fifty thousand if it just included the two, um, departments that, uh, unions that have reached, uh, memorandum of agreement?
Well, so if I took out, they should just take out fire, but.
Yeah.
Department heads, it's about, um, about ten thousand less.
And, and the overtime for the two weeks for the fire?
That's about ten thousand.
So.
Fifty.
What would be the comparison? Consider the two unions that have launched and the, um, department heads and provision.
Couldn't basically see how fire goes.
No.
I'd rather to just.
I really excluded fire.
Oh, excuse, oh, excuse, I'm sorry.
It's overtime to the fire in the neck, in two first two weeks in the body when the people who are out that training, we can't maintain the
Right.
desired level of support. That is.
We already have an overtime budget for fire, okay?
An overtime budget, but this was not anticipated when that budget was set.
And we had like only twenty thousand? The whole year?
It's long.
Thirty. So we cut way back at the overtime budget, assuming that these people would be trained. And now we're finding, whoops, they're not trained. And so we know there's gonna be additional overtime required, so I'm sure this won't be the only.
I'm, I'm just, I'm against, I'm against all of this. I, I just, it seems like we're just trying to jam something in at the last second. You know, I, I take the point that there will be some people who are expecting to get the dollar raised and their checks starting to put. But I'd also understand that a lot of people have to understand how a fiscal year works, how the budget process works and, you know, like, it's not a form of constant.
It seems kind of discouraging to have a raise.
Yeah.
But again, without this town meeting, without this special time meeting, that's how it would have gone down. That's exactly how it would have gone down, right? But it, but it's.
They're still getting a raise. They're getting a two and a half percent raise. Uh, they're getting, they're gonna wait a half percent of money for their month.
They know, they know there's a town meeting and we could have done this.
I mean, I'm, I'm leaning towards the end suggestion that we do the forty thousand for contracts for
DPW.
DPW clerical and department heads and the ten thousand for fire overtime.
But take any other action relative there.
It's probably gonna cost us money if we don't start paying on July first, so we don't have to count through the, the retroactive stuff.
Yeah, I think it's a killer roster. Yeah.
So we can argue. Those lines you just said.
Yeah, I got a motion. Yeah, I got a motion. Well, I think we've got Article seven before us. So it seems like we'd wanna change the number in Article seven from ninety thousand to fifty thousand.
But what it implies, I mean, to me, it's, on the understanding that it's, it's, it in fact, implements what you just described. And that's what I'm, wanna be sure is part of the understanding. Where it's just.
Yeah, DPW.
Yes.
Just developing what Dean said, so starting July one, even if we said, even if we said no, a two and a half percent kicking.
Yes, yes.
Talking about half percent.
Yeah.
I thought you said three, three. Oh, so either half or one.
Anyone discussion? Take a vote, Maury. Mike.
Go.
Peter.
Yes.
In the.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Sarah, vote yes, six to one.
To increase the overtime budget for.
So moved. And they were three.
Brian.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so that, that will go in with the, the select board endorsement.
It's the other approach.
Is there any other business for this meeting? Special souls and research projects, it's, it's for the twenty pound. I guess I had some, specific thing, you were talking about research projects. And I have some specific things that I would be looking for in the fall. And one of them is for all town buildings, whether they should be renovated or moved, what the cost is in today's dollar and the location if they're moved. As we're getting that facility study, and I think that, everything we've been doing historically is relatively piecemeal, and I think we need to look at everything, figure out what the cost is, whether they're staying in place or moving, if they're moving where. And then it gives the opportunity to sit down and figure out the order. I mean, you can give a prioritization too. Just to give us something concrete to look at. Digest.
And that study is due when?
Should be by August, end of August.
So if that's ready for us sometime before we get into the budget season. I don't know.
Or should we review a draft study before it's completed? It's too late once it's, the study is done.
No, it isn't. That's just.
One, we'll have another study.
Chuck, Chuck, damn, go ahead.
Yeah, so, uh, that is pretty much verbatim what the scope is, so we'll definitely have that by the end of August. And like many other studies that we've done, uh, you know, we can choose to fund the, ideas or the, you know, recommendation of that study or not, so. I don't, I, I'm happy to give you guys a draft and I'm sure we'll be circulating it to FinCom as well as, or Select Board as well as others, but, so I, I don't have any problem with any of that. It's, it's exactly what we're doing.
And, and I think that, you know, I think sometimes reports say, if you renovate, it's X and if you, build new and move it's Y. And I would like some type of feedback from the town as to how they interpret that. It's most advantageous.
Yeah, so I mean, there's, there's another element there, which is, you know, does the, does the existing use or space or, you know, several factors, actually, you know, what the today's use would be. Several, if not all of our buildings are fifty years old, so, um, you know, fifty years ago, the codes and whatnot that we hear about all the time were much different than they are today. Or how you do it if you start from scratch. So there's some things that, you know, we'll renovate them if we have to renovate them, but, they, they might need full build out, so it's, yeah, it's, it'll cover all of that.
Yeah, I did live in a three hundred and fifty year old house, so, you know, you don't just replace stuff.
Exactly. So, yeah, I think, I think we can, uh, accommodate all of that short order.
Well, then they came to us for some general comments one, about two months ago. Select board, people that were working on this facilities plan. Just the feedback so that they knew that they weren't going off on a tangent. Totally irrelevant to what our expectations. So we should have something that's useful.
Um, I, I, the other thing that I would like to see is on the water and sewer pipe replacements, to understand what's left to be done, and the approximate cost and a prioritization. Um, I, I think that every year we just approve an amount and it would be, nice to understand, okay, we developed this amount because we plan to do X. But if something occurs and we can't do X, we're gonna do Y and Z. So that there's an alternate. I mean, for instance, we approved the Pleasant Street one and it's a question of whether that's gonna be done. And it would be nice if, you know, we knew, okay, if we can't do that one, we're gonna do this. Um, just have it a little more specific without it, so that we understand it without it actually being, in the war as such.
Yeah, just, just to build on that, I mean, this ties into the whole cash for CapEx, right? You know, we agreed many years ago, fifteen years, three million a year and, like, I take your point, inflation, sure, it's gone up, but like, we should be, we should be gaining good ground.
Oh, we're gaining, yeah, absolutely.
But I think to Sarah's point, it would be nice to visualize, see where we're gaining, how much we've gained.
Chuck, Chuck, there's some good gaps about what's been replaced.
Yeah, just so that, we're not just saying four, four million a year for capital, that we're actually, some actual projects. And so it can vary from year to year based on what the project needs are. Yes, Chuck?
As opposed to what's ahead.
Yeah.
What remains.
Go ahead, Chuck.
I mean, I guess, you know, I've been here five years. We, I, we've made very good progress in five years. Um, we're, we're not nearing the end of that progress, I, I will put it that way. But I think the, ultimately, I'm not sure, you know, maybe, you know, if, if you guys wanna, wanna preview, I mean, I have this stuff, you know, pretty much all mentally, I don't think you want me to go into it right now, but anybody wants to stop by and I can give you the kinda preview version and then, dial in what you guys wanna hear and when, you know, I'm, I'm happy to come in and give you the full presentation, but, um, you know, the, the whole idea of, you know, with or without inflation, like, there's just, there's so much pipe. I, I, I thought I was, you know, I've given the presentation quite a bit showing my pipe map with, you know, red pipe on it. And all that red pipe is pre nineteen hundred, so, you know, it, it might not be formally on a plan saying we're gonna do it in FY twenty six, but, it's pretty obvious that there's more pipe work that needs to be done than dollars to do it, so. We'll leave it, leave it at that for now and, uh, yeah, well, I'll dial in whatever you guys want.
Yeah, it'd be nice to do it, you know, in the fall sort of thing, so that we're doing it before we get into the budget season.
For sure.
Okay, that would be helpful to us. What else? Is there anything else we want compiled for the fall?
I think we always talk about benchmarking and I think that should frankly be there. Um, you know, it's just how do we stack up relative to like communities?
Can we be specific with respect to the benchmarking we're looking? So that they know what to research is, is what I'm saying. Are we looking for staffing numbers? It's fire.
I think the big ones are of course fire, police, DPW, for the town.
Well, isn't it also the town itself?
Total, total employee head count?
Yeah, total.
Administrative services.
Right.
We're talking about benchmarking and staffing numbers. And for police, fire, DPW, and then the general administrative piece. Chuck?
Yep, so I, I guess I just wanted to put something maybe for the, for the group, uh, for yourselves on FinCom as well as Select Board and, you know, maybe there's other boards, but, um, it would be helpful for me, especially if, uh, you guys, being in the community, talk to other people in the community, cause, you know, I can give you benchmarks against other departments. But ultimately, it's what the town people want. And so I feel like I get a lot of complaints, you know, pretty much every week, whether it be about sidewalks and, um, water mains, water quality, uh, roadway work. Um, so, you know, we've been pretty much like, like you said, funding that at a certain level, for the years I've been here, and I think I've done a pretty good job of spending that money. But ultimately, you know, I still get the calls saying, why haven't you been to my street yet? So I can, I can tweak those numbers and show you what it would look like to do more, but, you know, if, if you guys think that people in the community are really starving for, you know, better sidewalks all around town, there was a comment at one of the Select Board meetings about concrete sidewalks, like, we can do it. I have no problem with it, but it is a lot more money, so. I think that's a fair question for you guys and the rest of the town, um, you know, to, to let me know what you guys think.
But I, I think, I don't wanna put words in Maury's mouth, but I think what Maury's saying is from a benchmarking, benchmarking perspective, it's more like, you know, for a town of fifty five hundred people, our DPW staff is X, I don't know, you know. And then you'd say, you know, for another town of similar size, or they have ten thousand, they should have twice as many DPW, you know what I mean? Like, that kind of just.
No, no, I understood in my, 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 kinda not, I'm not answering that question. What I'm saying is, the benchmark that I'm asking you guys to look at is, do you think we need to spend more money on these capital items to satisfy, the people that you represent, the citizens at large? And I think.
You know, I'll say, I think the sidewalks are in horrible condition. And I also think that we have sidewalks that aren't plowed, and why have sidewalks if we're not gonna plow them? So either get rid of the sidewalks or plow them.
Hmm, I mean, I'm ha- happy to do that too, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, I like, I like that.
I mean, Bennet Street, you can't get cars by, but yet we've got these sidewalks that nobody can use in the winter or in the summer. They don't use, they're rid of them.
Well, I mean, like, I, I'm happy to address Bennet Street one way or another, but I don't feel like I have a, a directive, uh, to, you know, either make it, you know, suitable with a curb and a sidewalk or no sidewalk, you know, I think that, it seems like we get into some of these projects and we, you know, we start these, these jobs and we do the best we can, but, um, you know, ultimately, I'm just trying to keep everybody happy.
Can I ask you a question about how you compare DPWs? Because we contract a lot of services. And if we compare with the town that does more themselves or does less, we're not getting, so, so when you do that benchmark, the DPW is unusual in the extent that it contracts down.
But it's still worth to have the comparison of those that contract out versus those that don't, for specific items.
As you're doing the benchmark. Don't just benchmark the DPW payroll.
Right.
Benchmark both the payroll and the contract and services.
For water, sewer and DPW. For water, sewer and DPW separately. Yeah, right.
The other would be capital equipment. You know, I think we had different people who have come through and said, this is old and it's on its last legs. We gotta do something immediately. And we always feel like, oh, gosh, who bought this? But it would be, I think, helpful to look at DPW equipment and say, okay, how long does typical DPW equipment last in the northeast? And we go fire trucks and ambulance. I wouldn't say we ought to talk about police crews. That made a good model of that.
So we put longevity.
Yeah, just capital equipment, what's the benchmark on longevity?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll do the best I can with, uh, the information that's out there. I think, uh, you know, ultimately, I think our fleet is in real good shape. I think we've, we've spent a lot of money and I think it, uh, you know, we, we take care of it, so, you know, comfortable there. I would say, you know, getting back to the capital in general, especially when you look at water main, like I just mentioned. You know, we got, uh, you know, a hundred and thirty years plus out of seventy percent or more of our pipe. That's not something that you'll find in any manual or, uh, be able to benchmark against any other community. It would just be that it's time to replace, no matter what, so. Um, deferred maintenance is certainly an issue.
Right. Anything else?
Yeah, I have a separate one. Uh, I've asked this before and I don't, I don't think it's an unreasonable ask, but, um, I, I'm, I'm requesting some form, we call it whatever, a cash report. But, you know, something from the treasury group that just shows what our money's in. I'm one of, someone on the FinCom, if someone asks, what's our account money in? I have no idea. It's the bank account, CDs, money market mutual funds.
To get the, yeah, the investments.
I would say on a quarterly basis, it's probably sufficient. I can certainly help draft up what it could or should look like, you know, it doesn't need to be down to the penny or the basis point, but, you know, I mean, especially in today's day and age where, you know, you're hearing of banks go under, so, you know, it'd be good to know if, you got more than the FDIC amount, you'll figure a bank account, right? So.
Right, but we're not seeing.
Yeah, that's not the policy. It's that we want the information, we want the data and the reports.
We haven't seen value of assets for years.
If you see one lump sum.
What else?
So, a few others that you want me to throw out?
Yeah, sure.
Sure.
Yeah, I think, you know, if they can look at how we're using technology. People are interested in exploring it for minutes and how that might be done. Don't know what the appetite is for, uh, for parking, moving to some sort of kiosk system. That's something that there's an appetite for or not.
Is, is, is that in the thinking as a revenue source or is that to somehow deal with parking issues? And I don't think I've ever seen a parking report. Is that, has that been broadly seminated? Didn't that come in a month or two ago? I don't know, have, have you folks seen them? I would like to see that.
Yeah.
So back to my initial point, is your kiosk idea, is this, is this money or is this, um, managing?
But on, on the money side, does it generally come out like positive, relative, relative?
Rock point does very well over there. It's extreme.
Oh, yeah.
Their, their visitor volume is higher than ours. Uh, but we did some numbers together.
And I used it in, in Gloucester on Friday for parking that was like, twenty five cents an hour or something. It was like a piece of cake, you know? You just took a little slip in your windshield and.
Half the time, I go, Gloucester doesn't work.
Yeah, Beverly took a long time to develop them. We can learn from their lessons.
I think people are getting more used to them. Better than meters.
Is the trade off, you have a big upfront CapEx to buy them?
Yeah.
Like, how much are those?
Could you use it at the beach too?
Good.
Shut it off when you don't allow non-residents to eat. You could actually do it based on the number of spots that are filled.
Yeah, you can actually program them so that you can put in your license, plate number, it recognizes you as a resident, doesn't charge you. Same, same system does that.
Okay.
I, I, I seen your note that, this is, this is, uh, an idea that came from the chief?
Yes.
Because?
He thinks it would make it unfortunate for parking much easier.
Okay, so there, there's a third issue.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we, uh, starting, that's the idea of the deputy position.
Yeah.
Particularly. Particularly for fire and architecture was the two. Is the internet service. We, we, I think that, uh, solved actually, but that's been the problem. So. Is that, were you reaching out to Brian?
We've, uh, I've started, uh, I've talked to a couple of residents who have, who have had our, their personal network. And we are researching, uh, Wi-Fi for the beach.
I mean.
So we're gonna find out. What is possible. Costs, if it's grants available, because it's a public safety issue as well.
Right, right.
So next, that's the avenue we're gonna pursue is getting off the safety. Irons, the beach, unless you have John first's, uh, password, you know, and I can't, if I get Wi-Fi service and there's no cell service. So these are things that we're exploring, it's, it's infancy at this point. So we just, when we have something to pull behind. Well, yeah, we're a lot further than we were two months ago, when we said, picking around, we've actually found a couple of individuals that, um. Have embraced this during on their times, like, there was no town assets, like, being utilized at this point, uh, to explore. So I think it's, it's a positive.
Yeah, the, the, the problem at the beach is the access is so low.
Yeah, it's just pointing to beach, judge me.
Yeah, I mean, it would be virtually impossible to do the walk-on tags. Um, using, you know, mechanical means, because you can get into the beach anywhere along the circle, you can walk up the path and go down. Steps by the beach, I mean, but the people sitting there don't pay any attention either, so, um. Yeah, yeah.
They're not gonna have the, the bulk of the people.
It's doubtful.
Right, yeah.
Why they're gonna start sleeping through, singing beach party, but we, 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 we capture most of the people, I think we do capture most of the people.
A hundred percent, no, yeah.
We never will.
You never will.
Right.
There was an ATM machine out there, so that helps as far as.
Where's the ATM?
Is there? Yeah, it's inside the.
You're kidding.
And, uh, but somehow, I think, they're either hooked on to, uh, the. Snack bars, hot wire, or whatever, because the snack bar does take credit card. So this allows for cash, because right now, we're not taking anything but cash to walk on the beach.
Right.
So now, a lot of people that walk all the way up the hill with a credit card, I can return it around and turn it back and go back down.
Go back to bake bands.
So there is, uh, makes, you know.
But it also, it also helps the snack bar, so that they, they actually work again, yeah.
Okay.
Because they saw it as a way to help businesses.
But it, it, it'll be great when we can actually take credit card.
Yes.
Like cash.
We never had cash.
Yeah, I don't have time for all the world, I'm gonna afford that for two days now.
Well, it's just.
There's also the, the problem of, of having a bunch of kids handling.
Yeah, that's, that, that's more how I'm thinking.
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely, and I see an unquestioned person.
Neither is anybody else.
So the other topic I'd flag, I think it's all. Capital financing, reserve size.
Yeah.
Just need to have that discussion.
Yeah.
Gonna get a, a grip on, um, unencumbered age to have.
Yeah. I'm, uh, beyond the reserves, um, I mean, all of.
Capital money is at half the extent, yeah.
Yes.
Exactly, yes.
Because it might be worth it creating some type of a policy. That if it's not spent within a certain period of time, yeah, or, or require. The department heads to give something to Andrea, saying when it's gonna be spent by, or something like that, just to have better. Controls, because it seems to me like we might have stuff hanging around there.
I know we're gonna be doing that, looking at that as you can see next.
Okay. Yeah.
Lay that.
Yeah.
I mean, to be honest, getting that cash report I asked for, that will help, because then you'll be able to match total real world cash versus budgetary cash. You know, where is it, is it allocated, does it slip through the cracks?
Right. Sorry, I had to interrupt.
Okay.
Apologize.
Thanks. Anything else? We're in motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Yes.
Any discussion? Brian.
Uh, yes, no discussion.
Yes.
And I just wanted to remind the FinCom, we have a meeting on twentieth.
Yeah, we're back here.
Very full schedule. It's a Tuesday. Oh, yeah. We've gotta do all of the transfers for the end of the year, we want Dan Chairman, the auditor for OPEC coming in.
Yes.
Tuesday, um, June twentieth.
So we, are we gonna clear it out, or do you think there'll be money left?
All right.
In common reserve. At six thirty at seven P M.
Yep, okay.
And then, and then we'll not be able to attend that one.
Okay, okay.
So I'm gonna be at the.
Oh, yeah, Friday.
Andrew can help.
Now, we have it Thursday.
Okay, and so she'll give us the, is the, anything we have to sign in, she'll give it to me in advance, okay, uh, okay.
We have a forum.
Will you want, I would expect your town meeting.
No, we won't need to, I don't think. We don't have that move article, that rate on me, come on. Yeah, so no, we won't need to meet before time.
Very good.
Okay, so.
That meeting, sounds like it could be, should be quick to, if those reserve transfers, those tend to be.
I have like six or seven things on the list. Do we want to start before seven, people have commitments?
Yeah, maybe I'll just. I just can't.
Okay. You know, I can put the best meeting if I need to, Mike.
All right. Maybe I'll zoom in on that.
I'm motion to adjourn. Second. Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Okay.